This conference will now be recorded.
Item number one on the agenda is consider approval of consent agenda items.
Madam Mayor, I'm in motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Second?
You have a motion and second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Item number two on the agenda will be requests or comments from the public. Just a quick reminder to anyone who might have comments, and we will have a second time for public comments specifically regarding the budget. And so that'll be item number three, the next item on the agenda, will be regarding the budget. But if any other comments that you might have, please feel free to come to the stand. You will please state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. When you have 30 seconds left, I'll give you a friendly little signal so you know to wrap it up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council people. I'm Connie Henry, and I live at 1123 South 102nd Terrace. And I have three items that are really weighing heavily on my mind. The first one has to do with the cemetery. I know that the cemetery board now called CPPS, I know they're working really hard to get everything in the city shipshape. I also know that there have been big struggles getting people hired to do that work. But we still have, as a city, the obligation to maintain and keep the cemetery in good, tidy, working order. And I'm just really frustrated. I'm not seeing that. I know the mowing is being taken care of, and it looks really good this year. I just see volunteer trees. There are dead trees. The stump from the big oak that was cut down still needs to be grinded up. And I just, I feel bad because we're still having many funerals through there. There was one just last week. And I thought, you know, those families pay their money for that space for the person who will occupy it, and they're not getting everything that maybe other parts of the city are getting. So if we can continue to push toward that end, I even thought today, hire me. 12 bucks an hour, you know, give me some coverage for insurance, and I'll go up there. There's volunteer trees in the evergreens that are right next to the equipment shed, and they're overgrowing those evergreens. They already had to cut out one several years ago. You know, dead trees, the whole nine yards. My second issue is potholes. If you take a, you know, a jaunt through Edwardsville and drive from 102nd to 104th using Edge Hill, yes, some patchwork was done there this summer, but there are huge places where we're down to, we're way past alligatoring. There are huge chunks that look like hockey pucks, and we're just chunking it down. And again, just like this summer on the corner, we're getting down to dirt. And the further we let those go, the longer and harder it is, and more expensive to take care of those. And my last thought is, please, if you're going to speak, pull the microphone towards you. I listen to this online when I can't be here, and we can't hear half of you most of the time. If there's a microphone near you, if you speak, pull it close, please. Thank you. I appreciate your time tonight.
Did we have anyone else for the public comment section? Come on up. State your name and address, please.
Mark Watkins, Edwardville Court, Apartments 531 South Forest Street. I would like to address the possibility of a recycling center here. I come from the Washington State area, and you can't throw a rock without hitting a recycling bin. And I know through some of the homes here, through waste management, have the recycling capabilities, but a lot of apartment complexes, it's come to my attention that that's up to the owners. I'm a capitalist. I've run businesses for years. They're not going to spend that kind of money if there's no, if there's, if there's nothing advantageous financially. And I've talked to a lot of people in the five years I've lived here that wonder why we do not have a small area that has bins. And I figured it would be about a 30-foot by 10-foot area. And I know we've got the infrastructure for land in Edwardsville, some of the parking lot. We have two fields out here. I know there's been plans for those fields, but those plans change yearly, and the bottom line, and the truth is, is those are still open, and they'll be that way for a while. I'm asking for a temporary possible six-month center. I understand only maybe an eighth to a fourth of the city will use those. But I do know one thing for sure in life, if we, if we don't ask, and if we basically don't do this, then nothing will get done. I'm asking for the city to, I understand this is going to be a cash outlay. There's going to need to be some policing. There's going to need to be some involvement with waste management. We've got a state-of-the-art police department, EMT and fire department. I'm just asking, not for a state-of-the-art recycling center, but how about something small for paper, plastics, things like that, that the community could come to? I've talked to a few business owners that would just as soon bring their stuff there, then put it in their dumpster, because they've got to pay extra money to waste management, you know, to divide it. So just, I'm an environmentalist, but I'm a practical environmentalist. I understand what we can and can't do, and I understand this is going to cost the city a little money. But there's a lot of folks I've talked to over the past five years that have wondered why Edwardsville is behind as far as other cities and other towns with the recycling effort for the community and not just for individual homes. And I really like what we do once a year, but let's do it every day. So, thank you.
Any other comments for the public comment section?
Hi, I'm Roscoe Davis. I'm with Roxos BBQ, 9711 call drive. And I kind of wanted to talk to everybody today about taxes. And the, I guess, the fear of rising taxes. In my business, I've seen the decline in bodies that are behind me, and that's what I founded my business upon. They have not returned to work since COVID. I'm probably down 40%. So if the city is thinking of, say, increasing taxes, it would be detrimental to, I know my business. We haven't been profitable, so this year is going to be very tough. I see the next two years being very difficult. So I just kind of wanted to put a bug in the air. If that was, if that was something that someone might have been thinking of, it could be a real problem for a business like myself. The other thing, and it would, I guess, be a question directed toward the Chief of Police. My driveway just got repaved. And when we did it, there's a, like a big drop-off that the public is using, and it's, it's a curb. It's not, it's not intended for a driveway. And I'm kind of looking for suggestions as to what I can do, because I've seen a lot of cars come up, and they get side by side wanting to make that left turn. And I want to avoid an accident. So, and I kind of feel responsible because it's my spot. So what can I do? Maybe put a cone up?
I understand, right, that it's a curb, but it somewhat blends into the driveway.
Right, right. And folks think that it's a drop-off. I don't, I don't know if you've seen it, or?
I think more of that's more of a industry engineering design, maybe some, so maybe have is a piece of the K-dot right away, right, right where that?
Yes.
Who knows what the rules are on that? I could refer to Mr. Webb, think of other people.
Yeah, I think it'd be best, and I, I, yeah, let us take a look at that. You know, those layback curbs, they're good and bad. And the bad part about it is, they're easy, but they're hard, so. Yeah, just take a look at it, because I see a lot of guys, I mean, they're coming off, and they hit it, and it's really, I mean, it's, it's pretty good Joel. But I just don't want to, I don't want to see an accident. I've seen too many there at that corner of 104th or on Line Gate Street. It's, it's an ugly one. Okay, I'm all ears. All right. Thanks, guys. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Keep cooking good barbecue.
Well, thank you.
Absolutely. So next, if the public comment section's done, we'll move on to the annual budget, and then we'll have the public hearing. Last time back, I think we did the presentation and then the public hearing. Is that?
Correct.
Are we ready for that?
Okay. You make the presentation. Typically, we make a presentation, then we can have, open the public hearing. You can take any comments you want. We can close the public hearing, and then based on those comments, questions of the council to the staff, we can try and address them.
Can you pull the mic a little closer to?
I'm sorry. I'd pushed it away. But, yeah. So again, we'll do presentation, public hearing, close the public hearing. Then, you know, based on those questions, we can either address those with the council, or it may trigger additional questions you have, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
All right. Yeah, so if that format works for everybody, it's the same as we did for the R and R public hearing, and we'll just go ahead and rinse and repeat for the purposes of this public hearing. This is the final public hearing before final certification of the fiscal year 2023 budget. So it's going to be a little bit more high-level than some of the other more granular presentations that we presented throughout the summer and actually as far back as late spring. So with that, we'll dive into it. What we're presenting right now is a staff-recommended budget for fiscal year 2023. This is what's on the screen right now is our budgeted revenue. Of course, that's all kind of based on estimates, based on the data and the metrics that we've got up to this point, and how we assume and estimate some of those revenue items are going to perform in fiscal year 2023. We always try and be pretty conservative with our revenue estimates. We don't want to overestimate on our, on our revenue side of things and then come in under. We've done a pretty good job of that the last five, six years of, especially in these kind of major revenue items, really getting to a fine point of, of where we budget in the end of the summer, beginning of the fall, in the adoption year versus where we end up at the end of the actual budget year. We've gotten the, those variables and those metrics pretty well mapped out, whether we don't, we're not seeing big swings in those major revenue items, and we very rarely see those where they're coming in under the budget of where we had assumed because we purposely budget that conservatively. Our budgeted expenditures at this point are $7,447,571, leaving us with an estimated fund balance of a little over $1 million. So a little bit more details on the general fund side of things. So what this includes is a half-mill reduction from this, what was adopted in fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2023. So the general fund mill in 2022 was 31.856. The mill levy for fiscal year 2023 in the general fund is proposed to be 31.344. So this would be the six-mill levy decrease in as many years. This maintains the city's general fund balance at 15% of expenditures. There are no major increases in equipment or capital purchases budgeted out of the general fund. Those tend to come out of other budgeted funds, our special street funds, our special sales tax funds, the funds that aren't directly tied to property taxes. This also provides staff with a 2% cost of living adjustment and a 3% adjustment in compensation in keeping with our pay plan. So it keeps us rolling with that. And it also includes the grant-funded public safety staff and the admin restructuring, which would result in a, in one new full-time person over in admin. The big difference between this and the last presentation that we gave you for the R and R public hearing is that it shaves, the R and R public hearing, the staff recommendation at that point was a little bit more than a third mill reduction. So this is a greater mill reduction than what we had proposed in the last meeting. And the biggest reason for that is we had another month of good, you know, halfway decent month of sales taxes. And there was also a property tax distribution that the county did not give us earlier in the year, and they gave it to us this year, and they notified, they, some error on their side where they caught it and issued that distribution to the property tax side. So what that does is kind of buoy our current year fund balance to where it helps us. Obviously, the current year fund balance is going to have a direct implication on the next year, and that keeps us where we want to be at that 15% of expenditures for fiscal year 2023. Less payroll. This is another updated slide from the last slide, from the R and R hearing. But this is all of our expenditure items, kind of areas in all the departments, except for payroll. So if you see on the total fiscal year 2022, what we adopted was $1,144,8310 in expenditures in areas outside of payroll and benefits. This year, the proposal is $1,574,138. That's a difference of about $125,000. That table at the bottom, that's another updated table, running those numbers through the Bureau of Labor Statistics. That 1.448 that was spent, that was budgeted in the summer of 2021. The buying power that that would need to be at for July of 2022 is 1.571. So what this table demonstrates is, is we've got a 9% overall increase in areas outside of payroll. That's pretty commiserate with the increases that we're seeing in, to inflation. So people and things cost more. You can see right there, the contract area and the material and services area where you're seeing your bigger chunks of increases, whereas equipment and capital outlay are pretty well, you know, flat when you combine the two of them, transfers, there's no change at all. So the increases that we're seeing are increasing the cost of our contracts and the cost of, of things, materials, not things in terms of big projects or big equipment, but, you know, our clothing allowances, fuel costs, things like that. So we were able to make, you know, take a look at this, shave a little bit off since the last time, and it's really, it's nickel and diamond at this point. There are no major capital purchases that we can just pull out to incur some savings. But there were some areas we really shaved down a little bit, and so that's where we're, we're seeing those increases. Again, what this table shows is those increases from 2022 to 23, 23 budget are largely attributable to the increases in the CPI from one year to the next. On the debt service side of things, so this is also a little bit different than what we presented in the past. So what we're presenting at this point is our revenue at 1.2 expenditures at a little bit less than a million at $888,000, which covers the principal and interest payments that we've already got budgeted. And it leaves us a fund balance of $729,000. Previously, we had talked about the option of raising our mill levy in the debt service to 11, and what that would do was incur some long-term savings if we were to take on some additional debt. So the timing of this is important because we can still do that, and it's probably an area that we're going to revisit for fiscal year 2024 budget. But because we won't have any principal or interest payments in 2023, that decision to alter the debt service mill levy from 10.442 to 11, so about a half-mill increase, that's probably more of a pertinent discussion item in preparation of the fiscal year 2024 budget, when we're actually going to be, we'll have a, a more solid plan of the level of debt that we're going to be taking on. And then those are, that's the actual year that those payments will come out. So next year, even if we go out and issue debt, you know, relatively quickly, at the levels that we've been talking about, which is our financial advisor has pointed out, you know, we can, we can stomach that and not have, and not see major increases in the mill levy, or not even need to have major increases in the mill levy. But the debt service fund, if it were increased up to 11, with the incursion of new debt, would allow us to make larger principal payments upfront, incurring long-term savings over the 20-year period of those notes. But again, we're kind of pushing that off to next year because that's when those payments are going to be made. So what this does is hold the mill levy stable for debt at 10.442. So here's an overall mill levy history going over the last six years. So what this does is break down the different areas of the mill levy and shows their changes over the period of time, where we've been making those kind of consistent efforts to either keep it steady or lower it. So as you can see, from fiscal year 2017 to last year, it's an 11% reduction in the mill levy that, the portion of the mill levy that the city of Edwardsville is able to control. But we don't have any say in property valuations. All we have is, say, in the level of expenditures that we're, that we're needing to request in order to maintain operations and to provide service. That makes up for about 24% of the overall tax bill for, for folks in Edwardsville. And within that 24%, we were able to lower it 11% from 2017 to 2022. If we were to move forward with the staff-recommended budget, which would be an overall mill levy of 41.786, that would essentially be a 12% reduction over that seven-year period. But as you can see, the only other area, the only other taxing jurisdiction that's got any kind of like reduction is the school district. But even within the school district, that's been a pretty recent reduction. The school district, just statutorily, they're set up different, so they bounce, or there's a lot more peaks and valleys when you look at the school district mill levy. So there, it's a little bit of an unfair comparison, but they are one that, over that period of time, have made reductions in their mill levy. Everywhere else has either been, you know, it's been essentially a 1% increase over that six-year period. So that concludes the state and the county, the community college, and the library. So again, through that period of time, Edwardsville's really the only taxing entity within Wyandotte County who's been making those consistent efforts to lower the tax burden for the residents in the quarter of that pie that we're able to control. Touching on the other funds real quick. So these are not affected by property taxes, but these are our other budgeted funds, and I'll kind of give you the highlights on those. Special Highway, what, what this table shows is our projected revenue and expenditures for all of these areas, and as well as the fund balance. Special Highway includes about $200,000 in capital projects, so those are our, our street projects, similar to what we've got going on right now over on Swartz. $200,000 in capital projects, about $50,000 in equipment and general street maintenance. These take care of the larger items outside of the, we've got $50,000 budgeted in the general fund under the staff-recommended budget, and that's more for your routine patches, the potholes that were brought up earlier, because the, not large-scale projects. The sewer fund, that's the fund funded through your sewer utility bills. We're not anticipating any changes in rates to the sewer fund. It's relatively healthy. I will point out, and I think it's mentioned in the manager report, we do have a couple capital repairs and maintenance needed in the sewer. The good thing about how we budgeted the sewer is that we always kind of inflate the contractual and service contract areas in anticipation that, at some point, some part of the sewer system is going to require those repairs. So we do have a healthy enough balance to, to make those repairs. It's going to be a matter of timing, whether it's going to hit this year's budget, which might require some kind of budget amendment, which is, we do budget amendments every year, or next year. So that, that's just one thing I'll throw out. That's not really incorporated into the, the budget as you're seeing it now, but we're aware of it from a staff level, and the fund is healthy enough that it can make those needed repairs. Special Event, that is primarily the funding mechanism for Autumn Fest, which is coming up this Friday and Saturday for everybody here. So I hope to see everybody over at Autumn Fest. Craft Fair opens up on Friday, and then everything else is going on on Saturday. Special Events largely funded through sponsorships. There is a transfer from the general fund over to that of about $6,000. But, you know, out of the $20,000, $23,500 in revenue, all of that is made up through vendor fees and sponsorships. Solid Waste, that is the fund funded through the utility trash and recycling service. So what that allows us to do is, we're not quite sure what the rate is going to be for solid waste yet, because that's going to be ultimately a decision of the council. What this does, if you remember the discussions we've had with Casey Disposal earlier in the year, we know what the maximum they can raise it, and we are budgeting for that maximum, but they, of course, will need to come to city council and demonstrate the reason for that. Now, I will point out, earlier in our discussions with Casey Disposal, we gave them essentially, through the addendum that we approved earlier in the year, we gave them the authority to raise their rates that they charged to us. Now, we weren't going to pass on those charges to the, to the customers. We were going to see how it shook out at the end of the year and see if we needed to make any transfer to the other utility funds. To this point, they've not exercised that authority to raise those, those rates to the city. I think they took the tact of, you know, we're going to, gas prices are starting to level off. I think their labor was starting to, they were getting a little bit more stability on that side of things. So at this point, they've not exercised any increases that they passed on to us that we need to make up for later on in the year. But still, the addendum does allow them some increases that we'll, you know, we'll deal with. It'll be a council decision later this year as to what the trash and recycling rates are going to be. Economic Development, we don't budget any revenue out of there unless there's some origination fees associated with an IRB project or something like that. There's nothing on the pipeline for that. There is a fund balance of $271,000 in there, even with just kind of an inserted number of $70,000 in case there is some economic development project we want to pursue. Technology Fund, that is, that is the fund that funds improvements and maintenance to, you know, the city's citywide organizations, technological, technological needs, our server maintenance, things like that, funded through court fines and a general fund transfer. No real changes or nothing of note to mention there. And then special sales tax. We're budgeting a $453,000 expenditure in special sales tax. Our pumper is paid off in the special sales tax fund. So the special sales tax fund has been extremely beneficial in terms of funding, especially fire equipment, without having to affect the mill levy or property taxes on the general fund side of things. The pumper is paid off, but with the pumper being paid off, it does allow for us to start budgeting for another replacement ambulance, as well as a vehicle for the, a replacement vehicle, vehicle for the deputy chief. We've got a, we've got an item falling, a large-ticket item falling off, which saves, which makes some room for some additional vehicle purchases in the fire department. It also has $100,000 in street maintenance budgeted out of the special sales tax fund, as well as, we've got $125,000 in park projects. We're starting to have more discussion with Stan Tech. They're starting to give us some more idea of the kind of external funding that we would be eligible for or not eligible for for the Riverfront project. So as that project starts to firm up, we want to, you know, we want to be able to, A, identify those external funding sources that aren't going to affect any of our, our funds, budgeted or not. But B, we also want to have some funding mechanism outside of the general fund and debt service, property tax-funded funds, that could go towards, you know, some portion of that project, however it's phased out. So that's, that's kind of just parked in there right now for, for use for park projects. So that's where the other funds kind of stand. Our annual kind of, or our, our budget highlights for the, the staff-recommended budget are presented right now on the screen. So what this does is provide for an overall half-mill decrease, representing a 12% decrease over the last six years. It provides for the 2% COLA adjustment and the 3% step for city staff. The step adjustment especially is in keeping with our adopted pay plan. It just keeps that rolling, and it keeps us from falling behind. It maintains a 15% fund balance in the general fund. That's in keeping with the city council's financial policy. It maintains the debt service fund at a healthy level as far as its fund balance goes. And it'll, kind of keys this up for a more nuanced discussion on where that needs to be set in 2024, once we are closer to a final amount of any potential new debt that we might take on. There's no rate increases budgeted in the sewer fund, and it prepares us for a potential increase in the solid waste fund should the, should our contractor come back and present a compelling enough case to, to raise those rates. Again, that's ultimately going to be a decision with the city council, but we do the budget now, and we talk about rates later on in the year. Street maintenance is budgeted at $400,000 across all funds, not included any potential bonded projects. So if we do take on new debts related to some kind of street improvement, that's not 400,000. What's the 400,000 is a $50,000 budgeted out of the general fund for your routine patches and work like that. Your 250,000, or excuse me, your $200,000 budgeted out of the, yes, $250,000 budgeted out of the special street fund, and then $100,000 budgeted out of the special sales tax fund. There's no major equipment or capital purchases out of the general fund, as I've mentioned. So those, those, those items I mentioned, the fire vehicles, potential park projects, mostly you're going to find in the special sales tax fund, which do not have effect on property taxes. So what Mayor Kahar had asked us to look at in light of the valuation increases that Wyandotte County had, you know, that they calculate, is to take a look at two scenarios. One representing an overall one-mill reduction, and the other representing an overall one-and-a-half-mill reduction. And in both those scenarios, what the mayor wanted us to look, look at was keeping that mill levy at 11 in anticipation for incurring some of those long-term savings in the debt service fund related to potential new bonds. So as I kind of noted, the mill levy for the debt, whether we raise it to 11 this year or not, not really going to have any operational impacts in 2023. So most of these, pretty much all of these changes from an operational standpoint, in the mayor's requested scenarios that we look at, are going to come out of the, out of the general fund. And so under that scenario one, that overall one-mill reduction, it's actually a 1.6-mill reduction in the general fund because we're raising the debt a half-mill, and then and then lowering the general fund, the rest, to make up the rest of it to get a a overall one-mill decrease. So what that, essentially what's on the chopping block at that point, so as I mentioned, there's no, in the general fund, there's not any real big-ticket items that we can just take out and not budget for and plan for a later date. At large enough dollar amounts, it's going to, you know, make significant changes on their own. The biggest one is the COLA adjustments for staff, so the cost of living adjustments for staff would be eliminated under that scenario, and it would reduce some of our park programs. Right now, it's budgeted at $18,000. We had to shave it down in order to get it to, shaved it down to $12,000. And the reason of, the kind of the magic number that we're working with in some of these adjustments is maintaining the fund balance at that 15%. So both these scenarios maintain the fund balance of 15% in keeping with our policy, but there are some cuts within there that would need to be made. Under Scenario two, which would be an overall two-mill reduction in the general fund, again, because we're raising the debt service a half-mill, the other would have to, their overall mill would have to come out of the general fund. Again, that would eliminate the COLA adjustment for staff. It would probably make it difficult to accept the additional police department officer if the grant were to be funded. On the fire side of things, those grant requests, those funding are covered at 100% for pay and benefits. That's not the case for the police department, so this would affect the revenue side of things too. It would reduce that by, by the amount needed to get us to that 15%. It would also reduce the street fund maintenance from 40,000 to, excuse me, from 50,000 back to 40,000. It's 40, it's budgeted at 40,000 now. The staff recommended budget at this point, budgets for a $10,000 increase, that shaves that down to 40,000 and keeps it level between 2022 and 2023. And then it's got those park program reductions, possible reductions, most likely coming out of the summer programs, the sports programs, you know, those are kind of set, we have a pretty healthy registration rate for all those. It's those kind of newer summer programs, the movie nights, the junior fire academy type stuff that would be on the bubble that we just kind of have to make it, make a call as it got closer to actually pulling the trigger on, on funding those or not. So those are the scenarios that the mayor had requested that we look at and what their potential effects overall would be on the, on the budget. Looking at, so what I did in this, in this chart is showing on the far left, the appraised value of a residential home in Edwardsville. And then as you go down, it kind of, it shows the mill levy impacts based on some of the scenarios that we're talking about. So if we were to not change the mill levy at all from where it's set at right now at 42.298, and I have a $350,000 house in Edwardsville, the city's portion of that tax would be 1,702 versus 1,682 with the staff recommended budget, and then it kind of goes on from there. They're not all going to be the same amounts, because property taxes are progressive, so the more your house is worth, the more mill is worth, worth, excuse me. And so what is on the far right is really the spread between no change in the mill levy and then the, the lowest decrease that the mayor asked us to look at, which is that 1.5-mill decrease. So from a $125,000 house, that spreads $22 annually. $500,000 house, that spread is $86 annually. If we're looking at just the staff recommended budget versus the lowest one-and-a-half-mill reduction, then we're looking at, you know, from working from the top, $15, $28, $40, and $57. So that just kind of shows, breaks down the actual household annual impact based on these different mill levy scenarios. So with that, if there's no questions from council before we open up the public hearing, I'd recommend we do so at that point, but if we do have questions, I'm certainly here to answer them.
I think we'll go ahead and open the public hearing, do we have a motion for that?
Zach, can you go back to that?
Just leave that up. Did you say you'd like to have us leave that up?
Yeah, just leave.
I'd like to make a motion when you open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2023 annual budget.
Second?
Do the motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
All right, if we have anyone in the public that's willing to, wanting to make a comment during our public hearing, please step to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have about three minutes. In this one, we might have some staff comments, and so that'll be adjusted accordingly if we need.
My name is Tim Adcox, I live at 1520 South the Hartford Terrace. I have been a resident since 2017. I just want to thank you guys for this opportunity to address my concerns. My concerns are going to be the steady increase of my property taxes. When I first moved here, they were substantially lower, they have increased since. And I'm just concerned about that, because I plan on being here for a long time, and I'm concerned about how much more they're going to increase to the point where I can no longer live here. And I know that I'm not the only one speaking and concerned about this. I'm also speaking for my neighbors and the few people that are here with me tonight. I'm also speaking for the older generation that are on fixed incomes and lower-income families that, the choices that you guys are going to make tonight are going to affect them more so differently than me, more so for lower-income families. Times are hard, things are a lot more expensive, and household incomes are not increasing, the taxes are. I just wanted to ask that, as you guys make decisions tonight, that you be mindful of the shoulders that that we're bearing, or the weight that we're bearing on our shoulders, because it's going to affect us. You guys know more about this than I do, I'm not going to sit up here and try to sound smart and know what this stuff means, because I don't. So I'm putting all my trust in you as my fellow neighbors are, and we are trusting that you are going to make the right decisions for me and my family. And this gentleman also brought up, is also concerning that we're going to run businesses out of here like him. I actually love his business. And I just wanted to make my concern known to you guys, and I will trust that you guys will make the right decisions tonight as you guys decide our budget, because I don't know anything about this, you guys do. So I appreciate this time, thank you.
Joe Kahar, 10550 Riverview Avenue, and thank you for taking time to listen to me. I wasn't going to say anything tonight, but after seeing the presentation that was just brought up, kind of made me want to look at something. So we had a approximately 12% to 14% anything you look at, property value increase in Edwardsville. And with that increase, if we're looking at asking the city for a little bit of a mill reduction, and the first thing they bring us is police officers and parks programs, I think we can do better than that. I feel like that is a, if that's the first thing we go to, that's kind of telling. There's other areas in the city where money can be saved. And I know that's, after watching several meetings and being at meetings, that's an easy thing to go to. We're going to cut police, we're going to cut parks programs. Those are the first things that people say that they want to cut if they don't want you to vote for something. With a 12% property backs increase, we're, I'm hoping that we can find somewhere to cut a mill out of our taxes. There's elderly people, as Mr. Adcox said, that are hurting, their money's not going up, they want to live here. Everybody that I know that lives in Edwardsville loves Edwardsville, and they want to live here. We understand that there's other taxing entities that you have no control over. The one that you have control over, we're asking for help in this area. That's all I have, thank you.
Do we have anyone else that's wanting to give a public comment during the public hearing tonight?
Madam Mayor, both of we, all right, I make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Do you have a motion in a second, will the clerk please call roll?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malak?
Yes.
I think we have some time for some council discussion. Zach, I noticed in the, in the report, we have less payroll. Could you, I know you and I had talked a little bit about payroll, because that is a lot of the scenario that we're looking at. That makes a big difference in last year's budget compared to this year's budget. So Zach was really helpful in getting me those numbers. In 2018, the payroll was $2,631,631. Proposed payroll, including the grant funds that would return to us for 2023, so this is a five-year swing, is $3,509,251. That is nearly a million-dollar swing in five years. I feel like that is not sustainable in the long term. I know we've had some employment increases and needed so, but when we're looking at employment increases in addition to 5% payroll, I don't know that we're presenting the governing body with every option that there is. I contacted the Wyandotte County Appraisers Office, they said in Edwardsville, we actually have a 14% increase in assessment across the board, like if you average the city as a whole. If we have a 14% increase in assessment and without making major cuts to our parks or eliminating our police officer spot coming up, if the best we can do is half a mill, then we are going to be in a world of hurt. If next year we're at a 5% increase in assessment, or a level assessment, or a negative assessment, because housing is not going to go up year after year after year. And so my concern is, for the long term, is this sustainable? I feel like we might need, we want to take care of our staff, there's no doubt. We want to make sure we're not stretched too thin, I don't want to get rid of spots. I just, I don't know if we can have a healthy budget and have both the 3% STEP and the 2% COLA. I would suggest let's maybe pick one and then work toward making our workplace the place people want to come and work, look at policies, procedures, things that we can do to make this a great place where people want to stay, because ultimately, we're not going to be able to compete with the larger departments around us. If that's, if that's really the work life that they're looking for, we just, we can't be at that level. But I just, I want to make sure that we're moving ahead in a way that we can be healthy and sustain our budget without putting too much on the backs of our citizens in a year where they're getting hit from every direction from inflation.
I'd like to comment that I'm a big believer of taking care of staff. Big believer of trying to cut where we can cut. But I think we need to be, really think about what we have and what we don't have. And I completely agree with you, Mayor. You know, we want our facility, our staff to want to come to work and be proud of where they work, but I'm really concerned that if we don't have the COLA increase and the STEP increase, we, I'm afraid that we're going to lose good staff. And we've got talented people in this room that really help, support, and do what our city needs, you know, taking care of things. But we don't have a fire station that somebody can come and be proud of, have a police station that people can be proud to come to work. We don't have, we don't have a lot of things that other cities around us do. And I'm just really concerned that if we don't express what we, how we feel about our staff, that we're going to lose them.
If, if there's a 15% increase in property value next year, am I reading this right, that we, $125,000 home would be about $90 more in taxes? Is my math right on that?
Quick, but it's 15%, then yeah, I can, let me run that math.
Yeah, just double-check me, make sure I'm right.
One thing I would just, I would note, when we talked about the, you know, those cuts, because those are both new budgeted items, so right, they're not existing items. Those are new, right, new staff, obviously caused for new park program. So that's somewhat why we focused on those, versus maintaining level versus add. So that was really part of that decision.
So at 15% for $125,000, you're only looking at about $20,000, a little less than $20,000, about 18, 17, 18?
But the tax on that would be what?
Oh, 11, well, the, oh, I see what you're saying. Are you asking that if you had a?
It'd be like 690 instead of 601, is that correct?
That'd be an overall value of $143,000. Yeah, I think about 87.
So roughly $7 a month for our portion of the taxes. I have great concern about not giving the 2% and the 3% to our employees. I, I, I too value the employees of the city, they're what keep us safe. Those are the people that run the day-to-day operations, those are the people that run to the, to the, to the fires, those are the ones that run to the wrecks. We want the top-quality people, and I've always said, we're competing with every other city in the metropolitan area for quality employees. And Edwardsville's citizens don't deserve any less than any other citizen in this metropolitan area. They're as value, as important as any other citizen. So I am totally against any reduction in staffing positions or not doing the 2% and the 3% increase.
I should also point out that the, just so, you know, the folks in the room are clear, that the appraised value here, this is, would be your appraised value in 2023. If your appraised value went up in 2022, that's not necessarily reflected on this chart. I feel like we get kind of lumped into, we being, you know, the cities get kind of lumped into the raising valuation process that the county is engaged in that can be appealed. And I've helped point people towards that direction on how they can appeal their taxes at the county level. But if your house is now worth 350, with the county says your house is now worth $350,000, and last year was only worth $270,000, the city doesn't really have a role in that. So what this chart right now is just capturing, okay, whatever it's worth now, if it's worth $350,000, these are the difference, this is the spread that we're in control of in, for fiscal year 2022. Not so much looking back at why a property was valued at X and went up 14% from one year to the next, because the city doesn't have, we're in control of expenditure levels, which speaks to the rate, not to the value of houses or, or how Wyandotte County does those valuations.
While we're looking at numbers, if we're, if we're looking at $7 a month for our portion, we need to remember there are five taxing entities within our district. And so that means it's not, if everyone took the same lead, if we're the lead and they're following in our footsteps, that's $35 a month for every resident, on top of when their trash bill is likely going to go up in January. So that is $420 a year. I don't think that's something to be shrugged off. 5% increase in one year is not typical. I don't know if most of us in here got, or we're in the audience for that sake, get 5% a year in a typical year. We have done 3% STEP increases regularly every year for the last five years. Of that, that means if you make $50,000 a year, that's, every three years, you're getting about $375 a month as it is just with the STEP. It's competitive from where we started. And, and yes, we do want the best candidates and employees, and we want our residents well taken care of, but they also have stood before us tonight and said, we need your help, and we cannot sustain this, and we have small businesses in our community saying, we cannot keep this up.
I challenge you on the sustainability, that, that, to me, we don't know what the future is. And we have managed through, this, this organization's managed through 2008, through the recession of 2008 and, and went through in flying colors. We came out better than most cities around here. So I, I don't like the word sustained, it's sustainability because we don't know what the future holds.
Well, I, I was speaking about the small business owner that said he cannot sustain it. And I don't think we can challenge him on that because we are not in that position and we don't know. He came and spoke to us and said, if I'm going to keep my business here, I need to see some relief. And I can, I can tell you from going from 2018 to 2023, that's over a $900,000 swing just in payroll alone. That we don't have a KCK budget, we don't have a Shawnee budget. We have an Edwardsville budget of $6.5 million and a million-dollar swing in five years. I'll say it first, it is not sustainable. We can't do that every five years. And sometimes we have to sit up here and make the hard decisions.
And I don't, and, yeah, I mean, during that five-year period, we have had some staff additions. For example, the full-time public works position, I think there was an ad during that time through the police department. So I'm not saying it makes up all of it, but part of it is, is adjustments in people. Some of it's in adjustments in pay plan, pay amount, you know, the, the steps. So I'm not discounting, I'm just, part of it is.
And even if we look from, from last year, from 2022's budgeted, so we'll just look at the last three. Uh, 2021 was 3,33,565. 2022's budgeted because we're not through the year yet. That's 3,103,050. And then with the, with the new additions, 3,509,251. And I know we're not going to probably continue at that rate. But we do have to, to look at, okay, in over five years, are we going to need anyone else? Are we going to need more people? Probably. You know, I mean, we, we have to, we're here to plan for the long term, for the big picture. And so we need to look at if we continue on this in five years, where are we going to be in 10 years? Where are we going to be in 20 years? And in 50 years, where are we going to be? And so I just want to make sure that we're doing what we can to take care of our staff, but at a reasonable rate that isn't as burdensome to our residents.
Zach, just for, for clarity on the, the, the grant-funded position, the, the dollars that are associated with those. I mean, I, I know it's a new side, it's not as clear as the position.
So you talk about what the?
For example, the, the fire.
Overall, it's about a $320,000 revenue item. Once you factor in the grant reimbursement for those additional positions. The fire being funded from a payroll benefit perspective, now there's other costs associated with bringing on new people. But that's funded at 100% of those areas and police department funded at 75,000. So some of those increases in pay and benefits that we're seeing next year is offset by about 320,000 in reimbursed revenue through the grant.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the, the staff recommended budget of one, a one-half mil reduction.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second. All the court, please call roll.
Shriver's.
Oh, sorry. Well, I just want to make sure we're clear. So we have, because we have our budget form, so we're, you're.
Yeah, what's included in the packet is what was presented.
That's what I'm, that's what the motion's about. What, what was the motion? I'm sorry. I didn't hear over here.
The, the motion was to adopt the staff recommended budget with the half-mil decrease in the, um, in the general fund, providing for the two, the compensation adjustment, uh, but the mill or the overall mill reduction of a half-mil.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
I'm going to vote no. And my reason is because I think that, I think by lowering the mil year after year after year, we're going to end up getting caught up to within the next year or three years. And I value our employees too. And I would like to see them be able to maintain raises and maybe even better raises than they get right now. That's my rationale for voting no.
And Mayor Kahar?
No.
Or two motion passes?
Item number five, consider ordinance number 1059 adopting the 2022 Unified Public Events Code for Kansas Cities. And, um, Zach, do you want me to just take this?
Uh, I'll, I'll kind of introduce it real quick and then we'll turn it over to, to, to some of your comments. Well, I'm up here.
No, go ahead. You're, you're there.
Um, let me find where I'm at in my agenda. Here we go. So, uh, we previously adopted the update to the standard traffic ordinance that LKM puts together. What's this, what LKM does through the STO, uh, the standard traffic ordinance and the unified public offense code, is essentially standardizing these municipal ordinances and laws. Brings them in compliance with, uh, changes in the state level and as a reflects, or as a relates to state statutes. Um, we also, through the adoption of the STO and the UPOC, have our own amendments that are specific to our operations and the STO, which we already adopted. That's mostly related to traffic, uh, speed limit changes, things of that nature. Uh, the STO changes are more on the local side of things are more related to the, um, we did some changes to the unlawful discharge of a firearm. Previously we had a shoot zone that was eliminated a couple of years ago. And now we kind of rely on some modified language as it relates, as it relates to, recklessly discharging a firearm. Those are all detailed in the existing ordinance. What's also included is the LKM prepared kind of overall summary of the changes from one year to the next. This was sent out, the, the UPOC was originally sent out ahead of the, la, of the two agendas ago. So council and, and mayor can have a chance to look at that a little bit more in depth. Uh, we passed the STO. Mayor Kahar does have some materials to pass out as it relates to sections of the UPOC that currently are not reflected in the, um, ordinance. But I believe you've got some comments to that effect.
Yes. And, um, so I've passed out the verbiage to the members of the council and I think staff here. Also, if anyone in the room, because this won't be up on the board, Zach has a few extra copies. Um, if you just want to put your hand up, he will, he will hand you the verbiage so you can see what we are looking at. Um, we are primarily, not primarily, we are only dealing with section 11 of the UPOC tonight, um, that I'm asking for some amendments to. Section 11 primarily addresses promoting obscenity and harmful material to minors. The definitions of what is considered obscene and harmful is defined within the articles. This includes ultimate sexual acts, normal or perverted, actual or simulated, including sexual intercourse or sodomy, masturbation, excretory function, sadomachistic abuse or lewd exhibition of the genitals. And taken as a whole, a reasonable person would find that the material or performance lacks serious literary, educational, artistic, political, or scientific value. And the average adult applying contemporary community standards would find the material or performance depicts or describes nudity, sexual contact, conduct, sexual excitement, or sadomasochistic abuse in a manner that is patently offensive or prevailing standards in the adult community with respect to what is suitable for minors. And this is mine for children. And a reasonable person would find that the material or performance lacks serious literary, scientific, educational, artistic, or political value for minors. I, as you read through, you can see I've underlined in the copies, the only, the parts that I'm asking to be removed. I think that we, we need to have this in our ordinances. Um, Zach had mentioned already amendments that we've made to the UPOC year after year. It is not uncommon for us to amend items given to us in the UPOC. Um, it's totally within our authority. Um, the governing body is a legislative board. We are entrusted to be the first line of defense when it comes to policies that protect our residents on a daily basis. There's been an agenda infiltrating our schools, libraries, and general culture, ta, targeting our children, grooming our children, introducing them to perversion and pedophilia at a young age. There should not be anyone above the law when it comes to promoting obscenity in harmful materials to minors, especially to those children, those who children trust the most. As a legislative body, we are not elected to pass along everything that is shoveled in front of us. It is our obligation to make sure the laws that we pass protect the people of Edwardsville, especially our children. The amendments I'm asking for tonight close loopholes that specifically allow for a defense of anyone who works in a school or a library or would be handing over obscene materials to children in our city. Sorry, I'm a little convicted about this personally. In addition, I have confirmed, conferred with local teachers who have confirmed that anything suitable for the classroom is already covered within the provisions of this. So if we take out this verbiage, the teachers are already covered for anything that would be, um, educational. This is not talking about a biology book in the classroom. It says it shall be a defense. This is what I'm wanting to take out. It shall be a defense, not might be, could be, it shall be a defense to a prosecution for promoting obscenity and promoting obscenity to minors. That the person whom allegedly obscene material or obscene device was disseminated, kind of scanning through here, um, consisted of persons or institutions having scientific audience to an allegedly obscene performance. Consistent of persons or institutions having scientific, educational, or governmental justification for possessing or viewing the same. Again, it has the same verbiage for if you work for a library, parochial school, college, or university. And then later for, um, if you work the register at a gas station or store, uh, then, then by all means, go ahead and hand it over to our minors. Here's a loophole to defend you in court. The loophole sections are not necessary. Given that, I would like to entertain a motion accepting the UPOC with the usual amendments as described in our packet by staff, but also striking 11.1, section D, 7.2, section C, and 11.7, section B, and D in their entirety.
I got a question here. We're just, are we going to vote on the entire thing or just this, what you brought up just now?
It would be in the entire thing with those modifications and modifications in the packet.
If someone were to make a motion of that effect, right. So right now, no motions on the table with the mayor's end is entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance that staff presented with our standard amendments in addition to the amendments that she just brought up. But at, at, at this point, there's no motion on the table to.
What are the legal ramifications of withdrawing, uh, from the UPOC?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, I think it's, um, as you can see, these are not simple statutes. Generally, um, with the UPOC, there is a general caution to be very careful whether and how you amend, um, pieces of the UPOC that have a statute attached, which this does. Taking away this, um, essentially defense to prosecution. It's not an affirmative defense you can use in a trial. It's a defense to prosecution typically happens at the charging stage. Um, taking away that with the way it operates with the misdemeanors and the felony. A first-time conviction is a misdemeanor, which we would have authority over. We would have jurisdiction. A second offense would be a felony. If we take away the, um, defense to prosecution, and let's say someone is charged with a misdemeanor and they didn't have the defense to prosecution. And then they have a second one and they weren't able to use the defense to prosecution. That is a felony. The DA's office will not prosecute that felony because they go to the, the state statute. And so there would not have been the ability to have a, the use of that provision in the first conviction. And I don't believe that they would take that felony case. There's also, I think.
With the district attorney's office or is this just?
This is my experience as being an assistant district attorney.
So you, you've experienced this?
Well, I've never experienced a city doing this. I'm saying that when we look at charging someone, we apply the state statute. So we have to look at a conviction that's done without, under essentially a different statute, without that state statute. It's highly likely that the DA's office is not going to take that as a felony with that.
Okay, so just to clarify on this, we're eliminating a loophole that says.
It's not a loophole.
The, let me finish. The provisions in this section, there, it shall be a defense to a prosecution, shall be a defense to the prosecutor for promoting obscenity and promoting obscenity to minors. That the persons whom the allegedly obscene material or obscene device was disseminated or the audience to an allegedly obscene performance consisted of persons or institutions having a scientific, educational, or governmental justification for possessing or viewing the same. So we'll just take that section and then it goes on to the library and then the college. That section, you're saying, now we're saying it's not a defense anymore. So they're going to be seen in court. We're not saying, oh, you already have a defense. They're going to be seen in court. They're going to have this charge brought against them.
Right.
So you're saying when they get to the county, so they've done this twice now. Well, if they get charged a second time.
Right.
So that means at that point, they've shown lewd and, lewd and obscene material to a child twice.
No, I think, I'm not understanding exactly what you're trying to combat here. If you're talking about, let's say there's just, I, I don't know what situation you're talking about. So I'm trying to understand because these are not simple things to just take out of a statute. And that's just my caution is that it takes perhaps more than just even a discussion here to really look at what are you specifically concerned about that someone's going to do? And then is there a way to tailor that to that situation?
So for example, a student at the, we have an elementary school here. That's our educational facility, student in the fifth grade gets handed an assignment, which is, this has been a national issue lately. You can watch videos across the United States of America and not just in California of students that are assigned a book to read. Parent gets up at the school board meeting, starts reading a paragraph out of the assignment. The school board chair starts screaming at them, stop, stop, stop. You can't read that in here. We're live. We're live on YouTube. You can't read that. That's obscene. And they're going, this is my child's assignment. So that's specifically one example of what I'm talking about. It could be, um, even, even more so, but that's happening in our country as we speak now. So what I'm seeing on this is that teacher, because they work in a school, for example, automatically has, um, a defense to prosecution that we're giving them. And we are a legislative body. We're giving them on the city level. Now this is brought to us to vote. If it's a state issue, let the state vote on it. But this is our responsibility here. These are our kids and this is our community. If we don't have a say in it, don't bring it to us.
This is, that, I, I don't, so I'm not the attorney here, so I'm not going to try to play attorney. But I, I, in some communities, now, I, I think one of our challenges in Wyandotte County, right, is generally speaking, that misdemeanors, they push to the municipal courts and they don't hear misdemeanors. In some counties, some of these misdemeanors are. In some counties, some of these misdemeanors are charged through the state statute and are then go to the district court, right? So, for example, I know, I think Baser is looking at, for example, Section 11.1 to eliminate it in its entirety from the UPOC. So what happens? Well, what happens is if an officer has a charge, then they go through, Mr. Mathies could talk you through that more, but they prepare that case and that case gets sent to the DA's office and then the DA's office decides whether or not they will take that case, charge that person, carry it through the district court. So I'm not saying you should or shouldn't, but as an option, if it's not in the UPOC, it is not enforceable in our municipal court, right? The statute is, the statutes in play, it's still a misdemeanor until it becomes a felony, right? Though our problem here is it's, I won't say it can't because it can, from what I understand, Mr. Mathies certainly. You know, will, with the district attorney take a case under this statute into the district court as a misdemeanor? Right?
And I'd say let's leave it up to them and let's do what we're supposed to do
Right.
as this legislative body. We are talking about.
I'm just saying you could eliminate the, instead of trying to worry about a piece of it.
What I don't want to do is eliminate it in our municipal court. Because I don't want to just shove it down. I don't want to say, oh, it's okay for a janitor who works at Edwardsville Elementary to have child pornography on their computer and send it around.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
This specifically is dealing with material, meaning any book, magazine, newspaper, pamphlet, motion, picture, film, minors, you know, unmarried person, we got to that. You know what nudity is, performance, sadomasochistic abuse, meaning torture or a person clad in undergarments. I mean, like, we are sexual contact to a child. Like, we were talking about children here. And this is our, you're, you bring it to us to vote on. We are within our authority, are we not, to make something more restrictive? This makes it more restrictive, not less restrictive. And so I am not sure why this isn't here in the first place, but it's come to us to vote on and we have the ability to make it more restrictive. I am asking that this governing body protect the children in this community by not automatically giving a defense to a prosecution for perverts in our community, to put it plain and simple.
May I ask, Pastor Attorney, can you define defense to a prosecution, please?
There is, a defense to prosecution is essentially how it operates with this statute is that it is not allowing perverts in school to show things to children because it has to be part of a curriculum. It has to be, so a defense to prosecution usually happens at the charging phase where they look at all of the facts, all of the information, and decide whether to charge it or not, acknowledging it can be a defense to prosecution. Now, they might get charged, but they bring it to the court that they have a defense to the prosecution in the first place. Affirmative defenses are just things that you're allowed to bring up in court as a defense to something that you've done. This in no way is connected to child porn. Child porn is completely different. The possession of child porn in and of itself is a, is illegal. The, this in no way allows child porn as defined by state statutes.
And what about giving children pornography?
Again, if you're talking about, we're using loaded words with pornography and just giving. And I don't know what you're talking about.
Oh, not assigning.
I saw, well.
Because you, and I don't, I don't mean to go around and around. We need to get down to it. I understand that. But the, a big issue here is children giving, given, given assigned reading that includes harmful and obscene materials.
First of all, the thing that needs to be understood is that this affects not just teachers. It affects medical professionals, therapists. It may affect police.
In what situation would a police officer be giving a minor obscene materials?
In an investigation, wanting to know what happened. This, this goes.
I'm sorry, that's, I like, I don't know if we have like, I need to take a second.
I spoke with the league attorney this afternoon about this because I have, it's my general understanding, home rule is that you can make laws more strict.
Right.
Their concern with the withdrawal is it actually makes it more liberal and it takes away part of the meat of prosecution. And so they're very concerned about that. And there is no case law on this, which means if we did this and it was challenged, it would most likely go all the way to the Kansas Supreme Court, which means it would be a huge financial liability for the city, just paying for the attorneys and the staff to get there. So there is a parental bill of rights being considered at the legislative level, which will address most of, if not all of this. And so my concern is that we, we have unintended consequences with good intentions. And I think all of us are disgusted by anyone or any organization that would put any of this forward and to try to Band-Aid it. And I think in a best case scenario, we should table it and get more legal advice. I honor your legal advice. I respect that. It appears that we need more.
I think so. I think this is not as easy as just deleting these. And I think you have to look at, does it affect unintended consequences that we want to make sure we don't affect or we address?
I agree.
And Mike, you spoke to the league as well, and it wasn't their thought that this would in fact be more restrictive, not less restrictive, when you spoke with them? Go grab Mike if you.
We had, I'm sorry. So, I mean, I think it was, it was kind of up in the air. I mean, that you could make the argument somewhat both ways, I think, whether it was more or less, right? I mean, if you take away the prosecution defense, then is that making the law more restrictive? Because I don't have that defense or are you lessening the statute? I think they expressed some of this, at least to me, you know, unrelated to, you know, on, at least on 11.1, their biggest concern was the second offense clause, right? Was if it would impact it. That was the, that was the concern they went to. Again, I think it's, I think at the end of the day, I mean, I'm not saying not get more legal advice. I don't know, I'm not sure what more legal advice will, will tell us at the end of the day, that, I mean, we can certainly get more clarity. But I, I think you're going to hear somewhat the same arguments is when you change something that statutorily doesn't have, what are those consequences? We could probably lay out 10, 20, 30 potential consequences. Will that at the end of the day come back? Is that going to change our, I mean, the council's position on this topic matter? I'm probably going to go out here on the limb a little bit here and say, I don't disagree. If you get challenged, you know, are you prepared to, are you prepared to go down the path of the challenge, which would require legal, have an expense to it? Obviously, the question is, would you be challenged? I don't know that the chief has any clue as to whether we've ever even charged somebody under these particular statutes. I know we have had cases that have involved different items around children, et cetera, cycle assaults, things like that. This doesn't come into play here. I don't, I don't know if this is an item that we spend a lot of time on typically relative to. This isn't new. So this, this, this piece of the UPOC is in the existing. There may be some minor amendments. But, but I mean fundamentally, this stuff has been there. Like you say, I think they're statutory. The best remedy, the best remedy would be a statutory change to eliminate that from statute. Then it's clear and easy for us, but.
But we can't change statutes.
Well, I mean, not at this process, right? I mean, that's, that's a different.
So all we can do is with what's in front of us right now.
So, right, and so, I mean, again, for the staff's sake, when we come forward with UPOC, with the SGA, we generally, part of the role of the leagues, I think, all these different statutes that get passed through the legislature, that affects us on a, on a misdemeanor, right? So the statute may have stuff about it that's felonies too, but they kind of pull out the piece of that relate to a misdemeanor case could be filed in municipal court and trying to help us package all of that so we don't have to go each individual city. Right, that, that's the purpose of UPOC and SGA. But we always do reserve the right, right? And we do have the right to accept, reject, or modify the UPOC. Now, what are the consequences of that, so, right? So do we have power under local government authority? Sure, because you have to vote on it, right? And so I think we have the authority that, you know. So what are the consequences of recommendations? And at the end of the day, I mean, we can say, I mean, I think what you're hearing from legal counsel is that would not be a recommended strategy. It's a, you know, it's an educated opinion. I would say the same thing. I mean, when you get in the statute stuff, sometimes it's hard to know what those consequences are. So somewhat, hey, do you leave it alone? But again, you have, you have that authority there. And so we can get you more legal advice, I don't, but I don't know if we're going to come back with something that's going to give you some definitive, different positions than probably where the voting body is tonight. And I don't know where that's at.
And is this a situation where the first defense is a misdemeanor?
Right.
And so if we're removing a defense, then they're charged with a misdemeanor. The second defense is a felony, or second offense is a felony, correct, typically?
Yeah.
And so that means at that point, the person's a repeat offender.
Right.
That we potentially would have been letting off the hook in the first place by providing them with a defense. And what I'm bringing to our governing body today is what's given to us in the UPOC and Home Rule, and that's the authority to decide for our city if we're going to leave this automatic defense to prosecution for people who are around our kids every day. And so, again, if, if I might.
If the teachers and librarians and school administrators are the real concern, it seems like the superintendent and the school board would be where you would approach this topic. And there would be a change in policy and procedure at that level. It, I, my concern is opening up a can of worms and we don't know what kind of worms are inside. It is, is, that's my main concern. If we open that can of worms and we end up, end up worse than we were before, that's my real concern at this point in time with the information that I personally have at this point in time.
Well, I have another comment similar to Chuck's. I have no problem putting these people in prison forever. But this was given to the city council at six o'clock tonight. And I haven't even had a chance to read through it. So I'd like to make a motion, we table this, so the city council can be more informed on what we should do legally and find out what happens if we go one way, leave it in, or if we take it out.
And this, this was a part of what was emailed to the council over a month ago that was put before us by staff to approve weeks ago. So it's nothing new. It was, it was in there.
I think he's mentioning the specific areas that you pulled out.
Yes. And as it relates to the UPOC of tabling, at the end of the day, the UPOC that's in place right now, which is the 37th edition, pretty much has, I think, probably most of this language is there. So we're not doing anything to add or delete to it. The three items that we have traditionally removed from the UPOC or modified are still there, right? So, I mean, again, I understand you may want to take a vote on it. But if you table it, at this point, we continue to operate under what's in place and the items that we have deleted previously and we're in tonight's ordinance are the same, right? We're not changing anything that we hadn't changed in the past. So again, that's y'all's call, but I just, it doesn't eliminate us carrying out our duties, law enforcement duties under the 37th edition of the UPOC until we vote something different. So just so you're aware of that.
I'd like to second the motion.
Did we have a motion?
Yes.
You motioned.
Can we, just for clarity, we'll, I mean, our next meeting is on the 26th of this month. Is that, that's two weeks. Is that adequate? So we can put it back on the agenda if that date's on.
Is it? I mean, can legal give us a little more clarification, see which way we need to go?
Okay. Thank you, just, yeah, so we know sometime in the future versus some specific helps, thank you.
Would it be appropriate for us to have an executive session on this subject? Sometime or an executive workshop on this?
I think that could be appropriate to handle this in an executive session at some point.
I would like to do that, just so I have a better grasp on what the mayor is proposing.
It would be attorney-client.
I would love to hear the public hear what in the world would keep us from doing this. And I understand that that might open me up to something, but I think they deserve to hear legally. If we're not, if we're passing this, why? And so, and we can talk about that if we're tabling it. It's not on this agenda, so we can, we can get to that. But love of our children, for heaven's sakes, we need to know what is the motivating factor behind? If we're pushing this through, this is brought to us to be the authority on. And so, man, I know, I don't want to violate executive session by 100 phone calls that night saying, what did you? We have a motion in a second.
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
No.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
Item number six, consider authorizing the acquisition of police vehicles, including all associated equipment and adoption of Resolution 202212, authorizing and financing the same.
Chief Mathies will handle this item and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Evening, Mayor, Council. Item number six, requesting to be authorized to acquire three police vehicles. You may notice from the date, it's awful early. And that's the world we live in today. Everything is just tilted in different directions. We received our pricing from the, what I would refer to as the mark bid in Kansas, which is Shawnee Mission Ford. And that pricing was just done about 10 days ago. And they said we had a later date to make these orders. However, they moved it up to last Friday. So we're kind of on the gun. If we don't move forward, we are waiting to order new vehicles in 2024, late summer. So more than about a year from now. So that's one of the things that, why we had to bring this early. We're asking for authority to have the city manager sign off on the, or say, financial documents to enter into a lease purchase agreement. And we're recommending that Union Bank and Trust be awarded that. They have the best rate at 4.12% with a payment for those three at $58,000 plus a year for the acquisition of three vehicles to include their upfitting, outfitting, where do you like to choose? That's $13,000 plus. And again, that's, all of these things are a part of inflation. When we were paying lower 30s for a police car just 12 months ago, we're paying low 40s, if not a little more. So that's kind of where we're at. I know it just involves this background information, but you have it before you. And we're just asking for the authority to move forward so we don't have to wait a full another year and probably this price spike and having the wear and tear on our vehicles. And we're still looking at a delivery, even if we move forward with this as late as March, April with deployment, July. That has been our standard. When we didn't have things like the COVID, where we waited months and months where the vehicles were on a train. That's kind of where. That's kind of where we're at.
Does this require an increase in the budget?
It does not. These are funded, they're in the budget.
Okay.
As approved.
They got to haul them in with the new ambulance?
Well, we hope not, because that's on some serious delay. We hope we get it sooner than that. There is a delay, there certainly is.
This is a good deal here, though. I mean, you're getting in, on the onset of this, so you're in line first.
Yes. They, they gave us a heads up, which was good, because we have a great relationship with the folks down there, and Ford told them, this is how it is, and this is the pricing. They waited so long, so.
I'm gonna make the motion, Mayor, that we authorize the city manager to, is it a resolution?
Yes, it's on the next page.
Basically, it's a two-part, right? It's a two-part motion. You're authorizing the purchase of the vehicles from Shawnee Mission Ford, and you're authorizing the city manager to, in, entering into the financing.
Which is the tactic.
I'd like to make those two motions.
As stated.
Seconded.
We have a motion in a second. Will the clerk please call?
Shriver?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Bishop?
Yes.
Malat?
Yes.
You know, as interest rates begin changing upwards here, uh, even here, doing this now locks this, you know, we'll be able to lock this rate in sixty days, so we'll close it in the sixty-day lock. Uh, we'll be able to, to, to close that. So we get, we get the money locked, uh, for that purpose. But as interest rates begin increasing, it really takes us to this discussion for the future of self-financing. So the, the challenge is having enough money at the front end to do the two to three years of purchases, right? So you may use your fund balance for that, but you don't really give it up. But it does, as, as interest rates are going up, that's probably something to look at. We are going to, uh, most likely create a new fund, a capital equipment fund, which is outlined in statute for, for creating these, and take the sale of assets that we have in the current year and place those dollars there. So when we sell the two police vehicles this year, we can take those assets and at least get it started. It may be a couple of years before we do that, but it, it is kind of a hedge against interest rate increases, and I think it's fairly likely we'll see another rate increase on everything. I read that the next, next month. So we're trying to do things here from a staff level to, to, to offset those things, right? Just wanted to bring that up while, while we had that.
Okay, city manager report. Mike, did you have something?
Uh, just a couple of extra items. Uh, you, you have the manager's report, um, uh, you, you have the information about the lift stations. Uh, thankfully, our Mission Creek Lift Station, uh, James, our, James Haynes is our Public Works Supervisor, and he also is, has a lot of experience in wastewater. We found that, quite honestly, do some maintenance by a third party in the past, they had done something wrong, uh, so to speak, and it, it, it just clogged up the port, and he was able to find that out. So we still have a bad pump there that we got to fix, but we weren't getting it to work at all, so we're having to pump the lift station down. Luckily, that pump in Mission Creek gets used very, doesn't have a lot of flow in it, but he was able to get that back up and operational today. He is great value to us, that sewer, sewer knowledge that he has, so he's trying to, to pass that on. So I, at, at least from a, an emergency standpoint, we're past that, we have capacity to pump all of our sewer. I sent you two items that I just didn't get on there, uh, you have those, I sent my email hopefully, uh, just, I meant to get those out to you, uh, so you have those, no action on them, F Y I's. The other two things that I just got today, uh, we got our scoring for what's called, uh, the T A P set aside, which is Transportation Alternative Programs, Active Transportation, and that is our sidewalk connection system that we submitted at Grand Ford, which effectively would tie the trail to the south into a series of sidewalks here and take those sidewalks all the way into the city park and potentially some on-street bike lane markings. We'll see what the total, you know, we know what we submitted, whether, we scored fifty-seven out of a hundred, which quite honestly sounds bad, but it's really not that bad. There are just some things that we're just, you know, again, it's, some of it's like transit, some of those items, and we, we don't have a transit system. So we're always trying to get points as possible. That meeting's in the morning, so I'll be attending that, it's an online meeting, uh, but it, so we'll present, we'll present to the scoring body our, why we think our project's better than all the other projects, so we, we go through that. So that's in the morning.
Who's the scoring body?
Uh, it is the Active Transportation Planning Committee, but then I, it always gets kind of scrawny. I think those get forwarded up to S T P, but those funds are set aside, so they're, they're scored separately, but the ultimate recommendation, I believe, comes through the S T P. Uh, and then, then ultimately go to the T T P C, and then from there they go to the Mark Board. I, I would like to say, uh, that Mr. Adams, who serves on there, uh, was, I think, instrumental in helping, they wanted a, they wanted a non-city person, uh, around economic development, and so they were only putting one person on that body. T T P C covers Missouri and Kansas on that body, and great, kind of serving in that capacity, so you had to be recommended for that and supported, and we certainly thought our recommendation was a good recommendation. So apparently it was accepted, I didn't realize that till today. And then the last thing, uh, relative to Ninety-Eighth Street and the, uh, the two properties that are currently still out on, uh, haven't accepted offers that are being considered for the eminent domain process, that hearing is scheduled, the, the appraiser hearing, so it's kind of an informal hearing that they hold between all the parties, uh, is Thursday the twenty-second, beginning at nine-thirty. So they, they have the appraisers, you know, our appraiser has to attend, our persons have to attend, the owners and the owner's representatives can attend. And then sometime after that, they'll make a, they'll make an award, generally within thirty days, generally quicker than that, but they'll report back to the court and say, this is what we think these values are. Again, we only have two properties, we still believe that one of those is likely to settle beforehand based on discussions, and the other one, half the party agreed to it, half the party didn't, and neither one of them live, uh, you know, they don't live in the property, they don't live in, they don't live in the state. So, I mean, but, but, not, not that that, you know, they're gonna still get fair compensation, but half of the party accepted the compensation, the other half, it's a split three ways, didn't accept, so that's, it's just an odd one. So hopefully we'll have all that wrapped up. I think most of the Ninety-Eighth Street planning is about done, and hopefully we can get that out on this, through the K dot process here, maybe this fall. I'm still, I'm still saying it's probably gonna be early, you know, February bidding cycle, but we can get it out early. Other than that, unless there are questions on the overall, I'm happy to answer those, as you know, kind of playing public works and city managers. So, uh, again, James did a really great job for us. We change, we, we, we've re, we've taken a different tactic on recruiting, and it seems to be effective. Uh, and so we've gotten several candidates that are in public works with experience serving in capacities as public works directors in other cities or counties. Like I said, we've kind of changed up how we're recruiting. The couple we've talked to, and I know the other half, I know that ones are, uh, S T P, you know, for quality candidates, so I'm hoping we can close that gap quickly. And that, I don't ever see those.
Doc, did you have anything for us?
Something's going on this weekend, I don't.
If you want to do one more quick plug for Autumn Fest, which kicks off on Friday, the craft fair opens up at four o'clock, so if you come at four o'clock at the craft fair, then you're kind of automatically entered for a chance to win a hundred dollar gift card just for showing up and seeing what's the selections like. Uh, it officially will kick off on Saturday with all the fun activities that we've been talking about. I do want to take a chance to, uh, recognize our sponsors, because they do provide a bulk of the funding for that event. Call Valley Construction and Commissioner Stites provided a, a gold level sponsorship as the Chamber of Commerce, B H C, Bank Midwest, S A Legal, who provides our, essentially our bond counsel, as well as Saints Pub and Patio, uh, for the mouse races, U B T, Union Bank and Trust Act as the primary sponsor for that, and the individual heat sponsors are Jackson Service Center, Supreme Green, White Lawn and Landscape, Gold Glove Charities, Bill Hutton and Mike Holloway, who, uh, who has a American Family Insurance, uh, office over in Bonner Springs. So I do want to thank all our sponsors and hope to see everybody out for Autumn Fest.
Thank you. Mr. Young, did you have anything for us? Chief Mathis?
Uh, I do, in addition to what I presented in the report, uh, Autumn Fest, good transition, uh, we will have our K nine there for, I hope, a couple of demonstrations and, uh, retrieval or something, whatever he has planned. So he'd be there if, uh, he will, we are sponsoring for our law enforcement trust funds. We, uh, as a community, a part piece of the community event, we're gonna use some of those funds. We hired the ice, the ice cream truck, you know, the one that drives around with the music things. They'll be there giving free ice cream for, uh, two, three hours, two, eleven, one-ish somewhere, but that's what we're using, uh, some of our drug trust funds. So either they're paying for ice cream, free for kids of all ages, so, we'll sponsor that. So we're looking forward to it, uh, turnout, and, uh, maybe you'll see the old bear at work, and have free ice.
Thank you. Chief Young?
Nothing new on what's there other than the depth of chief's discharge of our department on Wednesday. I'll be out of, out of the country for the next week, we can catch you. I will not be at Autumn Fest this year, but I will be thinking about everybody who is at Autumn Fest.
So it's not gonna rain this year? Sweet. We appreciate your consideration.
You need to go to Phoenix, they need some rain out there.
All right, we're gonna mix it up tonight. Councilman Scott?
Wow.
Wake up.
Well, I only have, uh, one comment on the, uh, our grounds maintenance, the contractor that we hired for, you know, our roads and different areas that they take care of.
Yes.
They're doing a good job mowing, but I don't see them weed eating and edging certain areas, and I don't know if they're, I don't know what was in the contract, if it was once a month or every other mow or, but they are definitely lacking on that.
Yeah, you're, you're, I think primarily talking about the Hundred Tenth Street.
Yes.
Up north here, and, and some mowing behind the sidewalk.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, if you wanted to, let me know some specific areas, too, that we can make sure to communicate that. As of late, we have transitioned to an every other week mow, so some of it might just be built up from that, but we'll make sure that there's good address. Let me know where.
Councilman Adams?
Um, Mr. Watkins' idea about the recycling, kind of an interesting, interesting concept, I'd kind of like for us to look into, see if we could, could do that, maybe have some glass and plastic and paper receptacles around, or whatever proper word would be for that. He has a good idea, so.
And we might want to look at, I mean, we have it in the past, and I, I mean, apartments are generally classified as a commercial service, right? But that, I mean, I know that doesn't solve all these, but, but as a potential is to have a requirement, and I think we have all the statutory things we had to do, that it would require that multifamily provide, uh, you know, recycling at those facilities, that's an option as well. But we, I thought it sounded good as well. We didn't try many years ago to get glass recycled, and at the time, they just didn't have, ripple glass didn't have the capacity, and they really are the, the glass recycler.
Yep.
But I think that's changed.
Yeah, I thought it was a good idea. Appreciate input like that. Just, I think citizens need to realize that the only, the only municipality that was excluded from the revenue-neutral public carings and accountability and so forth is the state who issued the rule. And so it would be really nice to hold our state to the same rules that our cities and counties are held to. So just as a matter of reference, I would recommend you call your state legislators, and they don't like getting stuff forced down from Washington, D.C., just like we don't like stuff being forced down from Kansas that they don't themselves uphold. So I'd encourage you to contact your legislators on that. Mayor, is there any, any update on the sci-fi process?
Yes, um, I, I was gonna bring that up here in just a little bit. Sci-fi and our, our effort to bring back sci-fi and our effort to remove Pilot from Edwardsville resident bill has picked up some steam on the county level. I have met with people personally on the county level, we've had, um, Councilman Adams and other folks on the council, I believe, um, Councilman Tre, Person Shriver, um, has also emailed, uh, among others, um, to really push for this budget cycle to get some representation for our part of the county, specifically bringing back sci-fi to bring county funds to street maintenance in Edwardsville and Pilot. That final meeting, um, which y'all are welcome to join me, I'll be sitting through in person so they can see my face, is September fifteenth, this Thursday, at seven P M. at U G City Hall. And so I, they should have a public comments, if anyone wants to share that with them, I would email them even ahead of time, um, but keep it up. If, if you have sent any comments, if you haven't yet, time is of the essence, send it to them, tell them to remember that we're here, they know our needs. But public council, even if you don't live here, tell them back Edwardsville, let's, let's, let's get sci-fi back and get Pilot off of our bill.
Just as an explanation, sci-fi is, uh, road funds from the county that we used to get, uh, an allotment in Edwardsville for being part of the county, and at the present time, well, in two thousand and eight, when the floor fell out financially, it was taken away, and, and understandably, we, we understood. But it's time that our citizens in Edwardsville have a part of the county funds that they send in for road repair, so appreciate that. Speaking of road repair, seen Mack and any trucks around? Are they working?
Not that I'm aware of, but they may have been getting prepped for it.
Saw one, right as I was coming down today, heading north on Edwardsville Drive.
Okay. Not that, that, if they, if they started working, they didn't contact me.
Okay.
But, but that, yeah, that's on my list this week to follow up to, as I said, September, and we're well into September, so it's probably a two to, two to three week project, though, and they may be finishing one and getting, getting us started, too.
About two months ago, there were some people surveying out in front of our house, and I went out and asked, they were on the other side of the road, went out and asked the crew what they were surveying for, and they said they were working for Evergy that, uh, and I asked them what, what was the project, and they said, we don't know, we're from Columbia, Missouri, and we just were hired by, by Evergy to come in and do surveying. And so in conversations I've had with several people, including Mr. Good at, at Evergy, is the plan is to bring, and I think you guys have seen this in your packet, the plan is to bring, um, it, it's not in the packet, it was in your report.
That guy said.
Yeah, just, it, the, the part that really is gonna impact a lot of people is that it's gonna cross on, from a Hundred Street to a Hundred and Second on Kansas, go north on a Hundred and Second up to Riverview, and on Riverview go over to a Hundred and Tenth. And in my discussion, and, and years ago, we talked about Edwardsville, I mean, about Riverview being expanded to either a wide two-lane or a three-lane all the way through the north for, you know, for future development, and, and having, not necessarily building it now, but making sure we can build it in the future. And one of the things, um, that's been mentioned to me is possibility of us as a city going out and getting the right-of-way, a wider right-of-way, the right-of-way we would need right now, so that Evergy could put their poles on the edge of that. Because at the present time, the, the right-of-way where they put their poles, which is the edge of it. the edge of it, they would need to be moved if we expanded the road, which would, it's what would be an expense of the city, which would be hundreds of thousands of dollars moving those poles. And so in my conversation with Mr. Good today, he said they were very much open to that concept. Of course they would be because we bought, we, we get the property instead of them having to negotiate for it. But we would have control over that right of way in the process. And what they're looking at is fifty foot wood poles up that, that area. And he said, if you want to see what it looks like, the new poles that are just on the west side of a Hundred and Tenth and Riverview that they just put in, those would be the poles they would be using up, up there, across Kansas and then up a Hundred and Second and over on Riverview. So, and he said, you know, if you guys do that, we'd be really willing to really help out, make some concessions. And, and one of the things he mentioned, and I know Mike's mentioned this before, is the, is to get the three-phase power to the, to the north sewer pump, which would be necessary to efficiently and effectively run that, that motor on that. So, and I think we could probably get more based on, if he's throwing that out so easy, there's probably more we could get out of the deal. But I think it would make sense, because when, when we plan for the city, we have to plan for today, tomorrow, and twenty and thirty years from now. And if we can save the city a couple hundred thousand bucks in the future and a disruption at that point that wouldn't need to take place, it's something we ought to consider. So maybe we can talk about that more in the future. That's all I have. I know that's about an hour's worth of stuff.
Councilman, Councilman Malat?
Malat? My turn? It's okay. Allergies, I believe, but I, it was good to see people here again. I'm going to say that again, because we play to an empty house so many times, and it's really good to have people actually listen to what we do up here. I'm trying to talk into the microphone. I hate my own voice, but my kids hated it in school, too. Connie, we, I did drive through the cemetery with Mike last week, and we discussed repairing the, actually redoing the road entirely. So that is, it's in the fire. I don't think that we're not forgetting about that. Another thing is, Mike and Zach, I'd like for you to do something with the signs up there that are falling down, please. I get comments from, there's a lot of people that go up there, not only just to do graves, but they walk and all of that. And I do get comments on that. I think some two-by-fours, you know, shoved down in the ground would probably fix that. And we had talked earlier about making a nice permanent sign up there like, like is up at Bonner. I'd like to go back into reviewing that a little bit and see if something could be done. That. Time falling down. Mike, on the, the tower, do we get a franchise fee from the communications towers, like the one that's, is it, there's no fees?
No, you know, some cities, they will put those, they'll put the cell antennas on a city-owned tower or a water tower or something of that, and they get paid a rental fee. But as far as franchise fees, anything over the airwave basically is not subject.
That was an easy twenty-five words, your last answer. Thank you.
Yes.
Citizens, it, it's very hard to wrestle this budget every year. I've been on the council for probably a lot longer than I should have, and I'm going to agree that sometimes I really don't understand the budget as well as I should, but I do understand our employees. And I think that we've got employees that we can really be proud of. I do not want to lose any of these people to any other community over nickels and dimes. It was my opinion that we should have kept the mill levy level this year, not changed it, and then it would have given us a little bit more of a cushion. I, I realize lowering it always sounds good, but you're talking about maybe seven or eight dollars, and I know that you're adding everything else into it, but you're, you're, you're lowering, you're adding five dollars a month for the, to have the employees that we have here, to have the public safety that we have here, the professionals that come to your house when you need help. And that's where I stand on that. I'm sorry, I, I fight money too. I fight money in my personal budget, but I think if you want something, you have to be prepared to pay for it. That's where I stand, and if that kills me politically, then so be it. But that's actually the way I feel about it. So it is a wrestling match, and we disagree up here a lot of times. I think it's presented absolutely phenomenally from Zach and Mike and from our department heads. They do a beautiful job of presenting that budget, and we have to sit up here and make the decision. So anyway, it's, it's done, the budget's set for next year, and we'll move on from that. That's all I had. Thank you.
Councilman Bishop?
I don't have anything now. Ditto and ditto.
It is hard to beat, when I'm last, almost.
It doesn't feel good, does it?
Everything's kind of sad. It is, I, I will agree, all of us that sit up here, we don't agree on everything, we can't agree on everything. We have different ideas, different opinions, but I think we all strive for the same goal. And the budget, I will agree, is the toughest thing to sit up here and vote on. Zach does a tremendous job, Mike, everybody, all the department heads do a tremendous job getting that put together. I do believe we need to pay our employees, but I do believe we owe it to our taxpayers too, to do the best we can. We try up here. Second, I appreciate everybody's passion. I truly appreciate Mayor's passion about the Section 11 and the promoting obscenity, if there is anything that we can do as a city, if there is anything. I don't know the legal aspects of it, but I know we're all parents up here. I know, doesn't matter if you're a parent or not, to protect a child, whatever we can do, I'm firmly behind that. But I, it's, 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 it's hard when you're ignorant to, let's take, let's take it all out, let's change it, but what are the ramifications? I don't know those things, but you'll hopefully do some digging on that. The special sales tax. When does that sunrise, or when does that?
I know Zach.
I know we bring it up every once in a while.
Yeah.
So that's next year?
Yeah.
Well, no, no, we, we need to talk about that probably.
Yeah, because we probably need, I, I need to verify, but typically those elections have to be on a uniformed election dates, which is August and November.
Of next year.
Yeah, so that's probably what we, I mean, and it takes some, I mean, it takes some time to, to build why and how, and, and again, whether, not whether we eliminated, I think we've, I mean, I think we've more than proved the value of that and certainly from a, from impact on taxes, yeah. But, you know, does it need to be tweaked, or is it just find the way it is? You know, I know we've talked about public safety versus just fire, we've talked, you know, how much in roads or parks or, you know, allocations, so. But I think over this, you know, probably starting after the first of the year is ideal timeframe to get that, so we can get it on a, on probably the August election is probably the best time.
Perfect.
I, I don't know if we can do a special election, but if we did, then we have all the expenses versus if we do it on a regular election day, it, those costs are shared with the overall election.
The Wyandotte County Health Department Health Official, has that started out here? What, where, where does that stand? Where a health official is going to be here?
Yeah, I think Zach may have an update. I mean, they're, they're, they're a third party, so.
Correct, it's a third party. The Wyandotte County Health Department will be out as part of Autumn Fest. I think some of that is going to be couched as like an introduction to the program. They've not started out in Edwardsville. The, because a lot of it is kind of externally funded through these other means, so it's a, my understanding is, right. And so my understanding is this is essentially a repeat of the program that they did in Bonner a few months back. Now just going to be kind of relocated in Edwardsville for the period of their, their funding period. But it's not started yet. My guess is, let's see, it's September now, I think we're looking at sometime around that, towards the end of October, where they would start having kind of those permanent office hours inside of the training room over somewhere in City Hall, accessible to the folks here.
We'll have to advertise that. That gets to my next point. Everybody knows what that is. Our sign. Our sign. Our mobile sign, our, well, digital sign. What'd you say, Mark?
I like it, we're sitting, we're by the church parking lot there. That's what you're talking about.
The digital sign?
Yeah.
Well, we don't have one.
She's referring to a permanent digital sign.
Yeah, permanent sign. No, we, I'm sorry, we had many earmarked to have a permanent digital sign, but we, we couldn't find a great place for it.
Right.
We agreed on a great place for it.
Yeah.
I just, I just, I've always said it, I think we have a lot of information that maybe just doesn't get to everybody due to advertising.
So one of the things we've engaged Stan Tech on a very small deal to look at, so we asked them, so the roundabout and, and that area up there is to basically help us get some context around, I mean, right, we had the state just put it back in grass, right? Because that's the best option. But we know we have both electric power and water access to, to, to the, to the medians and to the roundabout. So we asked them to basically come and do some concepts for us of, hey, what if you just, what is it if it just kind of left the way it is, you know, which is the, the base, right? And then what if we incorporated just hards, just some basic hardscape in it, or, or, well, I should say, softscapes of plants and things? And then what if we incorporated more hardscape, including potentially the digital sign or something like that? You know, conceptually, what would that look like? What, what, how would that, what kind of cost would those have? And what's kind of the ongoing maintenance around those, right? I mean, when we, when we put grass out there, we plant plants, or we put in signs, or we put in hardscape. It's, we, we have to take care of it, right? Or otherwise, it's, it's, doesn't really make sense to put it. So not that that is the location, but we've asked them to kind of at least put that in the look as, as a possible place for that, you know? So at least we have something to come back to the council and say, here's some options, here's some costs, here's some, you know, here's some, some things. I mean, it's just this, this intersection, we know is where the cars are at, but it's, it just, we don't have any land access.
I'll add to that too. I mean, a sign up there, that's fine. I don't think that should be the only one. I think our busiest intersection's right there, K thirty-two and Fourth Street.
Right.
Just, I'm just.
Right, right, yeah. We're just trying to have space that city owns that we can put stuff into, or lease a space or something, but yeah.
So just always bring that up in the back pocket. I know there's a lot going on.
Right.
Last, I wanted to congratulate our police department. For the second year in a row, Lexi Poll awarded the Edwardsville Police Department a Gold for Excellence in Policy and Training Management. Gold is the highest recognition given under Lexi Poll's Connect Recognition Program. Congratulations. A lot of hard work, a lot of good leadership.
Not just because we pay them a fee.
No, it's, it's interest, it's interesting how, what little you explained to me this evening.
That's what I wanted to sound on, just very quickly, that, the biggest piece of that is, though you can modify the policy to some local standards, the biggest piece of that is risk mitigation, that officers don't know the policy. Well, how we do that is, there's daily training bulletin, so every shift, officer is studying the policy, taking a test, which has been marked inside that software system. So we know that they've taken the test, that we know that they've passed, and they have to take it suddenly back. So they, they really have to have some command of that. We use that, it's an electronic system, it's a, you know, it's a posting system where they can have it on their phone, and they have the car sort of supervisors which have access to all that all the time. So what, what the big deal is, is we really focus on the daily training bulletin, that you have some knowledge, skills and abilities related to the policies themselves, and that's, I think, more or less why we score as high as we do.
And I'd just add, I don't want to put Chief Witten on, but we're also looking at that system to incorporate within the fire services. So they predominantly were on law enforcement, but they have expanded into other areas and fire being one of those, because the same kind of issues come up, right? Our policy, whether EMS policies, fire policies, just maybe a little different than police, but we think, I mean, Lexi Poll has been around, has been a very positive company and done a lot of work across the nation. And their goal always has been is, you know, how do you mitigate risk? Because that's what, from a city standpoint, right, that's what costs money, right? When you have something happen and you had policies and people weren't trained properly or weren't knowledgeable, those policies, I think our city attorney would say, those are, those, right, those are the cases that are very difficult then to defend. And so the more we do to reduce the risk, then hopefully we don't have, have those incidents occur. And I think we've done a solid job of trying to do that over many years. Just an update.
We have the letter for K thirty-two that Councilman Malat had mentioned before.
I'm just finishing it up, so I apologize. I know you wanted to try to get it tonight, but we'll get it wrapped up here next day or two and get that out, but if you want to address the council on it, so.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if you want to touch base on what we're, what we're trying to do here.
Yes, so once again, we were hoping to address K dot with our failing K thirty-two section, the medians are crumbling, we've got weeds growing up all through, we've been on the back burner for quite some time. We, they've got very big projects just a little bit up from K thirty-two, so it'd be pretty convenient for them to shoot right down here and help us out. But we're hoping to have a formal letter from the council and a governing body to K dot, just requesting, hey, you've got a ton of money coming in, please pay attention to our part of the state with that money, this is your responsibility. We are here, please help us out. In addition to that, I was able to speak to a state legislature, legislator over the last week about getting more connections made with federal money coming in to help specifically on K thirty-two and plans that Wyandotte County had. So hopefully we'll get some progress in the near future. But we'll, at least we'll be able to say that we tried, and they can't say we didn't ask. So hopefully we can get a formal letter soon.
That sounds good. Could you maybe have him add into that the water that stands in front, since Roscoe was here tonight, the water that has been standing at his concern over the last, ever since they made that four-lane highway?
Yeah, exactly.
And we can address just some of those.
There's always, I mean, it rains a dribble.
We get the same thing at, actually, Fourth and K thirty-two, because it's supposed to drain off, but they don't ever maintain the grading, and then, and it's especially bad, quite honestly, winter time.
Add it into that letter, because that, that is definitely a safety concern down there.
Okay, and we don't want to lose Roscoe. No.
We, we discussed this a little bit earlier, but UG, their budget meeting to finalize their budget is this Thursday. We did mention before that we are about a quarter of the taxing entity here, and they are another quarter. And so it'd be a great opportunity to show up, if you can, at least email the commissioners, they're representing you as your county board. So please send an email to them advocating for funds to return to Edwardsville. We're paying them for a reason. And so it would be nice for them to hear from us and say, hey, get sci-fi back, eliminate pilot, and send some money that we're investing back into our part of the county. Zach, I, I ask you, because I think that you maybe had some information on this before. I had some neighbors asking me again about the sidewalk. I believe we have an easement in Williamson Farms that would connect, give a trail kind of to the school for kids to walk. Do you have any updates on that?
I think I know what area you're talking about. It's, it's behind on the east side of Williamson Farm, abutting a Hundred and Fourth Street, I want to say. I guess what's the, updates in what area?
I think potentially there was a fence built there, and maybe we could find out, did they have a permit to build the fence there? If not, if that wasn't approved, can we, what would it take to move forward in putting a path or a sidewalk for kids to safely get to? And I know we'd have to then put a crosswalk in, but we could hopefully work with the school district to do that.
Right.
But a lot of folks have brought up the walkers from that area being able to safely get to the elementary school.
I know that we've looked at in the past, it's been, Mike, you- I know that we've looked at in the past, it's been, Mike, you might have some updates.
No, I just, there, there is, there is a dedicated pedestrian easement between those properties. I know when the most recent property built in their fence, uh, that was kind of noted, uh, with them, but there was the existing fence of a home that had been there for a while. So I, I, I can work with, you know, the attorney, but ultimately it's, it's a pedestrian easement, uh, which means they have to provide access through there. So it may require relocation of the fence. I think the reason it had never really been touched on very much was just there was, there was no sidewalk or anything built there. There could be. I mean, there, there's no reason it can't be. It somewhat goes out then to a hundred and fourth and, and you know, what's the access across the way? But, uh, it's, there's clearly a dedicated pedestrian easement there. That section of Williamson's farm, you know, there was, I think, six different sections. But that section's over there, I think that's like number five and number six. It was really the only place in the subdivision where they required sidewalks. Uh, technically, they should have been on both sides of the road, but again, how and why it's on one side, but that's, that's better than none. Uh, but, uh, but there are dedications for those items. So it's just a matter of saying, move forward, ask them to, you know, advise them, need to relocate.
Find out if they got a permit, like if they just went ahead and built it or if this area paid it. I think that might determine how we move forward on it.
Well, I will say this, at least in, in, I say recent times, the last number of years. So anytime we issue a fence permit, part of that permit talks about, you know, it's the landowner's responsibility to ensure that the fence is built onto their property, that it doesn't impede any easements, if it impedes the easement, right, they may be subject to removing it. I mean, we've got same problem with some sewer lines where they built their fence out. Now that, now I got a manhole in somebody's backyard with the dog and it's like,
Yeah, the application essentially.
You gotta do that, yeah.
As the affidavit that they've done to do, because we don't have surveyors on site to go do that work. So the application kind of serves that affidavit that they've done their due diligence as the applicant and an issue word will arise and we kind of address it at that point. So this would be one of those issues where we would take a look at.
Okay, yeah, if we could just follow up maybe the next meeting and, and find out what we would do or could do from there to get safe access for those kiddos.
We'll do it.
Um, section eleven, I won't keep us too long on it. Um, just kind of going off of, uh, Councilman Shriver's comment. When we're looking at it as it's been tabled to get more information, I would really, really hope that we cannot just look at, okay, we can't do it because of this, this and this, but bring us a solution. Bring us, okay, this is how we, whether at circumvent is probably not the right word, but how we use the verbiage to not, not leave any loopholes, to not leave a special defense for employees of schools or libraries or universities or the person at the cash register at the store. But, um, and that was in the last one, eleven point seventy. But, uh, how do we close, close those up to eliminate special defenses moving forward?
Yeah.
And so if we could find solutions, I think all of us would feel a lot more comfortable, um, moving forward with that. Uh, Edwardsville Mobile Pantry was this last Saturday. Um, part of, of the burden I had was when we were discussing the budget, we had a record number of folks sign up and come get groceries. We served fourteen thousand two hundred and thirty-six pounds of groceries to over eight hundred people. There is a need in our community and they are feeling it. I can't tell you, I've seen the faces of the people in our community and I have heard from them and they are hurting. And I really don't want to be a part of making it harder. And so I, you, staff knows I value them. I mean, I've, I've spent time and, and you know that, and I want to take care of them. And so I don't, I, it's, it's hard to be on both sides of that. But, um, anyway, just, just to let you know, uh, Councilperson Shriver, Councilman Shriver was there again, helping out. Um, Zach is always helpful. Uh, the police department, we had an officer stop by to help us with traffic because cars were just backed up and around the corner. And these guys were waiting for hours to get a couple of boxes of groceries. So thank you for helping not to be a success and we'll see everyone this weekend at Autumn Fest.
We need to sign the, the budget thing, right? Everybody, all of us.
See Zach on the way out.
All of us need to sign that budget deal to turn into the state.
Yes. Another one of those county forms. Uh, oh, so what I was gonna say, oh.